What did you say?
I said, "We don't need you to have a forum." Did they dismiss? Oh, Mark's still here. Yeah, it's you. We're on to you. I mean, we're still up to you. Sorry, Mark. Hey, no, where is he? And then the next thing. Board members, we're still needing to give them direction on the K-8 school. You know, one of the thoughts, and just to throw this out, is what about sending this to the SAC and, you know, asking them to talk to the parents there? See if they have any ideas, thinking, thoughts on it? And then, you know, then that can come back through the superintendent and back to us. Mr. Dodd?
Yes. I did have a question in regards to the students who are zoned for that school. If that were to become an environmental center, I assume, or my assumption is that we're talking about Home SASSA Elementary School. I don't know.
Yes, sir.
That's basically.
So what if a student who is zoned for that elementary school, parents do not want that child to go to an environmental center? Would they be zoned, would they be able to go to another elementary school? Or would they still be at that school?
Good question. They could request an out-of-home from the, if they were living in that K, if they're going and attending Home SASSA, their zone for Home SASSA for kindergarten through 5th grade. The academics would be very, very similar. They would still have the mathematics, the science, the social studies. But you would actually see that science curriculum embedded into maybe a content activity or a lesson that they would actually be doing. But again, I think that that would be a conversation because Chuck would then be part of our process to be able to determine, okay, the question is, if we've got a parent that does not want to attend an environmental center with upper-level students, then that might be an opportunity for an out-of-zone request.
I think, and I think, Mr. Dodd, you're right. I think those are the questions we're going to have to ask as we start thinking about, you know, would we have open enrollment district-wide? And then, does that change, does that change the transportation? Do we decide, like the academies, where we absorb the busing? And I think those are going to be things we would, we would need to get, you know, some information and some costs on. You know, that also brings up, though, a question, and Mr. Blocker, maybe you. We were at one time recently going to explore an open enrollment for the entire county because there were some advantages. Is that something we're still exploring?
We did, Mr. Dixon did explore that, actually visited Marion County. But we didn't really see really any advantages to date that would.
The classroom, I mean, meeting the classroom size amendment.
It's still kind of hanging out there. We really haven't got any good answer as to if that would.
Exempt us, sir.
I think Marion County just implemented that. We had a couple of questions about the high maintenance, high performance, and that kind of thing.
Right.
Know if that takes away from that, if you can still be eligible to qualify for that. So we can't seem to find an answer.
And honestly, DOE couldn't answer some of the questions, so we're still trying to get answers.
Chuck!
So at this point, with all these questions that we have moving forwards, now, we're not going to have these questions answered until we give you permission to move forward, is really where we are.
It's more of an exploratory.
It's an exploratory.
Take a look at it, bring back some information to see.
Okay.
And if you have an interest in it, then at that point, we would spend some more staff time and start putting together things like transportation costs and some additional things like that. Facility, what would need to be done to the facility, if anything, and those kind of things.
And the motivation for presenting this to us now is really to capture and maximize those attributes that we have here in Citrus County. It's really what, why you're here with this idea. You're seeing that it's working down in Hernando, and you want to pull it up here.
Well, I think that the location has kind of, the uniqueness of Home SASSA is why we've selected that area. But the actual environmental, I think, would best sum up what Thomas said earlier. And that was, you know, the drive for STEM-related curriculum. And here's a chance to do something at one of our schools. That we have a unique location, unique waterfront. Not a lot of schools have a waterfront property. And we have that. And it also would then tie in with what we have across the, further up the road, which is the Academy of Environmental Science. So it all made sense to us to explore the ability to do that and increase our exposure of STEM classes to our kids.
Ms. Bryant?
I just want to say that we take one step forward and two steps back because Home SASSA was a K-28 school in the 50s when I was in the 8th grade.
And you laughed when they went.
I know.
Just like everything else, fashion, it always comes back over.
I still think it'd be important, though, to find out, what do the parents, some of the people that are there, think about us? You know, we're, I'm afraid that for us to kind of start sending out a, I mean, I think we need to send out a balloon first to the parents, see if they're even as interested down there.
That would certainly be the next step. But if we had gone to the parents first, then there would be five board members saying, "Why are you asking parents when you're talking?"
Absolutely, absolutely.
I appreciate you taking this.
So the first step is if you don't have an interest in it, it stops here today. If you have an interest in it, then we'll continue to start putting more time in, and that would include, you're correct, asking the parents and the community. We have done some preliminary stuff. We talked to some community members down there that were interested in something like that. But we haven't done anything to the answer.
I've been thinking for years that I have had an interest in this because it seems so obvious, you know? It's like, there's a field of corn. Should we not pick corn? Or we all have to try to find some apples up there, you know? It's so obvious that that's here.
And it's the.
Right, it's the attribute.
Mr. Dunn?
So this is the recommendation of the superintendent? I mean, we're, this is something that you would like to see the board proceed with? I mean, there's some good objectives here that would help students and families in that area.
We would like to move forward to at least pursue, you know, even the idea of seeing if it's becoming an interest in the community and also other communities.
You mentioned, or give us the opportunity to explore the idea.
And the other thing is, you know, we haven't really talked about costs. I know you went to Hernando County. Was the cost per student, how did that?
Well, I can tell you that staffing plan is going to be much different. But I don't know, we don't staff our schools much like they do. So that would all be in the exploration.
Oh, no, aren't they? What's the matter with those folks?
1,800 students, one parent, one AP.
I'd like to make a motion to.
That would be all in the exploration, staff, all the same.
I know we have a lot of questions. And in order to get those questions answered, we need to give you the opportunity to do the exploration. So I make a motion to offer staff the opportunity to explore the option of a K-8 environmental science school and look forward to having these questions answered.
I need a second. I have a motion by Ms. Bow for a second by Ms. Powers to allow staff to explore the interest and information on a K-8 science school. Is that correct?
I understand.
Can we, is that part of the understanding?
By the motion, I'd like to make a motion to offer staff the opportunity to explore options for a K-8 environmental science school with a focus of STEM course studies. Is that unique or unique?
Okay, yeah. And with that, I'm going to just go ahead and call if there's any questions or comments still. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Okay.
John Davis was my principal, and he was also my teacher. It's okay. At Home SASSA, 8th grade.
Okay, we are going to go ahead and I'm going to, we've been getting some information too, so that's why I've been hemming and hawing here for a second. We're going to just open up to have a update and discussion on impact fees. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. I didn't have that, yes. Can I have a motion?
Second?
A motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Bow for to approve the minutes. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Before I get into some of the pieces of this, the one thing I wanted to do is I'd had a communication with the new county administrator, Randy Oliver. And he had shared something that I wanted to read with you, even though it would have been public record anyway. I thought it was really good because I think it's good to know what type of individuals we're dealing over there. And so I just want to read with you in part, "Mr. Kennedy, schools are a vital part of our community. While there are many factors companies use in making decisions and relocating decisions, the quality of the school system is one of the highest rated. Businesses will not relocate to an area where the school system is not first-class. Our children are our legacy. I have found that serving on the school board is one of the most important and most thankless jobs and, I'm sorry, of all the elected positions. Consequently, I would like to thank you for your service and dedication to students." And I thought that was an excellent place to begin and to have over at the Board of County Commission. So I wanted to lift that out to you. I think we've all seen, there's been a couple of articles in the paper. And so I know there's some of us that want to clarify some things. But one of the things that I want to do is bring you up to date as to what transpired because we haven't had a chance to meet as a board since our last December meeting. And so there's definitely been some information that I want to clarify and tell you how things went. We learned on December 12th that the school board letter that we had sent requesting a joint meeting was taken off the agenda by the chairman after it had been put on the agenda by the interim county administrator, Mr. Rogers. Our two staffs had been in conversation about the fact that that letter was going to be on the agenda, so we were a little surprised when it was taken off. Given the fact that the Board of County Commission fast-tracked this impact fee, it's kind of caused us to have to be in a very reactionary position. So on Tuesday, December 16th, at the Board of County Commission meeting, I found myself in an unusual situation as a school board chairman of the largest government agency in Citrus County to ask the Board of County Commission to again consider having a joint meeting prior to their meeting of today on January 13th, 2015, at 4:00 p.m. I was informed by the chairman who stated, quote, "You or we are encouraged to attend their January 13th meeting like everyone else." I think we all know that we are not everyone else in this matter. And I would remind this board that of the eight categories that impact fees are collected on, the only one that the Board of County Commission does not have jurisdiction over of the budgeting for that is the school boards. As a result of those actions, it certainly left us in a quandary of what to do. The cities of Inverness and Crystal River reached out to the superintendent to express their support of the school district. I don't know about you all, but I certainly received quite a bit of communications with disappointment that the chairman would not permit a joint meeting and basically to tell us that we were just like everyone else. Probably one of the people that reached out to me that was the most encouraging of wanting to have a conversation was the new Commissioner Carnahan. And Commissioner Carnahan asked to have a meeting with the superintendent and her staff and myself to talk about the fact of what we couldn't talk about previously. So we met with him on January 5th. And I will tell you, it was an extremely productive meeting. We weren't there to try and convince each other of where we stood, but we did want to share with each other where we've come from. And I want to thank Commissioner Carnahan for reaching out, being willing to listen to us and talk to us. The conversation primarily talked about the historical view that the board has taken on impact fees and how we've had them and used them. Commissioner Carnahan expressed a willingness to be less rigid about a flat 0-3-year moratorium and that the city seemed to be his willingness to. Over the years, we've talked at different times about what they were, you know, willing to do. And of course, we've said, well, something is better than nothing. But, you know, you are the policymakers in that. Unfortunately, we are not. On January 6th, the city of Inverness passed a proclamation, basically trying to support the school district, but also saying that they could support a kind of modified version of Commissioner Carnahan's idea. And that was a, instead of a straight three-year moratorium, a staggered moratorium. Crystal River City met last night. They had a moratorium, a referendum on their agenda, the same one. It did not pass. It didn't because they said that they believe the school district should be collecting all of the impact fees. And there shouldn't be any discussion about it. They felt like we needed them. They certainly feel that the Crystal River High and Christopher Primary was not funded using impact fees. They subrate value to that. And as I had received a phone call from the paper to discuss the matter and where it was going, and I think there's, I actually had some calls from county commissioners. And I think this was along the same message that Mr. Dixon, I believe, shared last night. And that is, personally, I've always believed and I continue to believe that impact fees play a vital role in the funding of our school district. And I don't, would not belong to have anything other than the standard quo of what we've been doing at minimum, Doug. If you're going to zero them out, I would much more prefer you looking at it annually than not. I think somehow that was misconstrued, as my statement is, that we, that somehow we were changing our view on impact fees. First of all, this board, just as to recap, and it was surprising because a lot of us thought it was in the summer. It was actually February 11th, 2014, is when we sent, by unanimous vote, and it actually, the motion was for the Duncan and Associates impact fee report to be transmitted to the Planning and Development Commission of the Board of County Commission for review and implementation. We voted for that unanimously then. It is now a year later that we are in this position. And I think the board may know this, but as a reminder, that study showed a 34% decrease from the current collection of impact fees for school impact fees to a 42%, depending on where you looked on that study because it slides. So we're now in an interesting position. I'm handing out to you a presentation that I had done this past week. And I don't recall if this was sent to you or not, but I wanted you to have hard copies. And there's enough there. I would just encourage you to look at page 20 on it. I don't think it's necessarily page, but I'll show you what it looks like and you can get right to it. This is mainly things from our budget that we have had. But I think one of the most important ones is. Page. It's tied on. It's this one. It's called "Impact Fee Capital Projects That Were Funded From 2013 to 2014." This seems to be the big thing that everybody keeps talking about. I'm also going to hand out to you the background on this so that you know where those numbers came from. And what you will see is that over the last approximately 10 years, impact fees funded almost $14 million or $13,799,000 in projects. If you were to look down there and to look at what had to do with a new school, it is probably about a third or less had to do with new schools. Impact fees, as we know, have funded increasing the capacity of our existing schools. As we know, we talked about a little bit ago, La Canto High School, which I think is a perfect example. The downstairs was Central Florida Community College. The upstairs was the high school. When the campus moved, we needed to occupy that entire school. But we certainly didn't have an infrastructure there that was supportive of simply a high school the way it was designed. We were able to use those impact fee dollars to in part pay for that. And the other thing I would remind this board is we, other part of what we used for that was food services revenue to pay for part of that. When you all had large increases in students coming in, in the mid-2000 period, buses were a big part of it. We somehow are thinking, are forgetting, or sometimes what people have forgotten is, those schools have had the capacity still in there. We still have the students still coming there because we still have been accommodating students, even though we haven't been able to make the expansions necessary. And so some of these expansions were ones that were done far after the time we had students started coming there. I think you all know Citrus Springs Elementary School, and I was a parent there at the time, while Central Ridge was being built, while that school was designed for about 750 students, we had almost 1,200 students there at the time. We, of course, the idea there was we built a new elementary school. And that was appropriate. We're now facing on, for example, on the east side where we have Pleasant Grove Elementary. And for those of us that have visited there, we know that you have to go from one classroom through another classroom to get into that classroom that has no windows. And that's not in one classroom, that's in a number of classrooms. Why? Because that school was built for a much smaller number than we occupy today. We know at some point we need to address that. Hence, what we do, we expand the sewer plant at Floral City so that, and we've been talking about this since I've been on the board, we haven't had the funds to entirely enlarge the cafeteria as we need to there so that we can also deal with then Pleasant Grove, who's at 100% occupancy. I say that because you all, I know, realize this, but that's where this has all come from. And the conversation, I think that we have to ask ourselves, because I can tell you, the community is asking us after our last board meeting, where do we stand on impact fees? I think that staff and this board has historically, as it's been reminded to me, has always unanimously supported that. There's been some comments that question whether we do or not. And I think that we have to realize whether that is unanimous still, whether that's a majority, or whether that board, this board has changed its view. I think we have to decide what our view is on that. So with that, I open it up to the rest of you.
I have to board the reasons we want to have that discussion with the commissioners so they could see all of this information, all of the figures, and understand that impact fees were not just for new schools. There were so many different things that were funded by the impact fees. And that seeing that, one would think they would understand why. We wanted to be sure the impact fees did not go away because if they did go away, those items funded also have to go away.
Or someone has to pay for them.
Yeah, or some, and the people have to pay for them, the taxpayers who are here right now, not those coming in, the ones who are here right now. Some other.
And I wasn't here during the years where you had PICO money. But for those board members that remember PICO money, I remember a board member not sitting there when I went up and said, "Well, good luck," without any PICO money. So I'm sorry, I want to let it continue, but I just, yes?
Ms. Powers, when you talk about those dollars or meeting with the commissioners, every commissioner I've met with understands that, that it's not just for new construction. So, because a lot of these charts, a lot of these packets have been given to commissioners previously and currently they've asked for. So we didn't let that drop just because they didn't want to.
Has everyone asked for it on the board, kind of, in this process?
No, ma'am.
Just checking.
I've had several calls.
I think looking at the impact fee issue, it's a much broader issue than what we're able to digest and really have conversation about here tonight, even in a workshop. I know the county has a workshop scheduled for Tuesday, February 17th, and the public's inviting to come in and talk about impact fees. I think the dialogue is necessary, looking at it from the perspective of the various people that I've had a chance to reach out and have this broad discussion about. There's such confusion when you look at congruency, the difference between congruency and impact fees, how they relate, can you have one without the other? Is it sustainable to have one without the other? A lot of those questions need to be brought out, and I think that workshop is going to be a valuable resource for that. Looking at the process and the timing of how those impact fees are derived, from my understanding, and please correct me if my information is wrong, that it's every seven years, there's a study done to determine the.
Every three years.
Every three years.
And that's part of the impact.
We have seven years to spend the funds.
So seven years to spend the funds. It's readdressed every three years. So the impact fee moves every three years based on market within our county. So looking at that, it appears that it self-adjusts within every three years.
If it's adopted, keep in mind, though, it's been adopted the last two times, it's been adopted at 50% of the study's recommendation. So anytime that that's modified from that study, then what you basically are saying is that you're not agreeing to the study.
It's every three years we're addressing it.
But now we're six years where they haven't funded it at the same level recommended. So now they're talking about, and just so you know, as we are meeting, the Board of County Commission has a workshop on, no, their workshop in February is on simply the study, to adopt the study. It does not have anything to do with the impact fee moratorium or suspension. That's being done as we speak. And so by the time that conversation is taking place, it's moved. So that's why we can talk about, you know, I'm not sure what I would say, as a board member, we have made it clear, we have funded the projects we have through impact fees. This is a conversation where I think the board has to say, are we still supporting impact fees as part of our funding? Or are we saying we will use our budgets without them in the future?
Well, the frustrating thing is, like you pointed out, reminded the audience here right now, and it's probably already done, the county commission's already made their decision.
No, they're right now enclosing their public portion of the discussion.
They were having.
And they're actually right now just opened out, they're actually trying to make their decision.
They're making their decision.
Has Chuck Dixon spoken?
No, Chuck Dixon, we did not, we, our board, our board could not convene to send Chuck Dixon to say it. Keep in mind, our last direction that the board gave was to simply ask for a meeting with them. That was, that was actually denied. And so at that point, there's no other direction.
The last time Mr. Dixon spoke to the commissioners, it was after this board voted 5-0 to support impact fees. And that was the, and the impact fee along with the consultant's recommendation, and that's what he carried forward to the commissioners. So there's really not been any other direction, board-wise, to make a, or to make a change.
Well, I know what you're trying to do is to get a consensus with 100% or a majority of us all supporting the impact fee. And I still go back to that, we need to sit at a table. That is not going to happen. I understand that. I definitely understand that. The decision is being made right now with us not in the audience, with us not being represented in that audience, with our voices not being heard except through this moment. And I understand that. I obviously want to have support from the county's perspective with our initiatives. I definitely want to have a voice that has a common theme so that we have strength within the board unity. I see the value to the impact fee. I definitely have analyzed what's happening around us. And I definitely see the struggles of those people that feel that the impact fee is the magic bullet to help strengthen our economy and give us, give us a boost. And that is it. I am going to speak.
Wow. I managed that one thing.
Yes, ma'am.
I think discussing the impact fees with the county commission would lead us in a direction of discussing whatever we wanted to add to, take away from the impact fees. Years ago, I was talking to one of the commissioners and saying, you know, there's. Could we not sit down and talk about the impact fees and make sure it is applied accurately?
Should we not sit down and talk about the impact fees and make sure it's applied accurately? You have some families coming in, five children. You have some families coming in, no children. Well, you cannot do a head tax on kids, we know we can't do that. But, but there's an impact that's different. So let's see if there's something we can come up with that would be equitable for everybody. But there, there needs to be something because the people right here, you and me and all of us, we cannot be always expected to bear whatever happens to us and pay more and more and more. The people coming in must also have their part in paying, and that is the impact fee. Even though we might take and change it a little bit, we could change it, but through a discussion with the commissioners, we might find a better solution, all of the heads together. But I think, to me, you just have to do it. The people who are being affected have to sit down together and discuss what you're going to do. We can't make decisions for the commissioners and say, well, I think Sandy wants to build five roads on the west side of the county, and, and Ginger wants to build two on the east. Go ahead and do it. You can't do that. You have, you have to come to some sort of agreement and see what you really need. And we have been able to do that, and it's so frustrating that we have another governing body that, that.
Controls.
Controls, and won't sit down for, for whatever reason, I don't even know the reason, but with us, and let's discuss it, and let's get a solution for the people, the citizens of this county. This body and that body together should come up with an answer. And we owe it, because we were elected by the people, by gosh, we should be able to give them the representation they elected us to give. And we're not doing it, because we're not allowed to sit down and discuss it.
Ms. Bryant?
I texted Pat Deutschman on Sunday and said, good article. And she texted me back, oh, that woman's, my thumb's been operated on. But it never works as good as her, which is. And she just belted out stuff to me, and I said, oh my lord. It was a good article. We do have 15,000 children that we're responsible for. And so the county commission is too. They don't like it, but they're responsible for all of us and our children.
Ms. Dott. Do you have any thoughts that you want to, and I don't want to put you on the spot as far as that, but if you have any thoughts to add?
Well, you know, I mentioned this before, and I'll mention it again, I mean, definitely impact fees during times of growth are what helps fund infrastructure. That's what the schools need, and it's going to be difficult for us to give up that revenue source. I was disappointed that we're not able to have a discussion with the Board of County Commissioners. And I also said that I, I do understand the argument by some individuals in regards to student stations and a lack of growth and declining student enrollment, that impact fees are not what, there's no impact. Now, my view is that, you know, I, I support the impact fees during times of growth. I am disappointed again that we weren't able to sit down. I don't think we can give up that funding source. We can't have a discussion. If they're not going to allow us to have a discussion on the matter. I wanted assurances from the county commission that there would be a mechanism in place in order to continue with impact fees. I am concerned about a moratorium because I'm concerned that it would be a difficult thing to put back into place for some people, to have to cast a vote on that and put that back into place. And with that being said, you know, I feel like it's, it's best that we stick with the recommendation of Duncan Associates on the report, and that's the way I feel right now.
And Mr. Dodd, I think you, you bring up a great point, and I just want to clarify because, and not in case I either misunderstood you or more importantly, probably the public, because I think I know what you're saying. We talk about in times of growth, and of course, the question with impact fees is you collect them so that then when you get to that point that you need them, you have it. If you only collect it when you grow, you wouldn't have enough money then to utilize them. So I, I didn't think that's what entirely you meant, but, but maybe I'd be wrong. And I, I'm sorry, my example to that is, we've talked about, you've got to be ahead of a wave to be able to, for example, build a Central Ridge where was, I think, the largest amount of impact fee monies for a school outside of, yep, yep, was, was Central Ridge. It was about almost 2.5 million that was utilized roughly for that. There wouldn't have been that if we had waited until that moment to collect them, because there had, it takes a while to collect impact fees. So that's, I think, always been our concern is, at what point do you, do you need or do you not need? And part of the thing is, is that the beauty of impact fees is, it is a, it is a fee for service. If you are not utilizing a new home, then that impact then isn't getting, you know, that's getting basically banked. One of the encouraging conversations that the commissioner had, Commissioner Carnegie, was to look at the seven-year spending period, to say that, could we expand that? And he seemed to have a willingness to look at that. That would certainly allow us, I think, more appropriate, because frankly, in seven years on a new school, it's fine for these small projects. But on a larger school, which is probably the next big expenditure where impact fees are going to come into play, it's going to probably be that Central Ridge, Pine Ridge school, in our own budget, in our five-year budget. We haven't had another project because we can't depend on impact fees to fund our budget for these capital improvements. And I know this board knows, from when Ms. Powers and Ms. Bryant started, we used to get two mils plus PICO money, plus you all had a higher taxable value base in the county. We now have 1.5 mils, virtually no PICO money, and we had a declining taxable value. So we, and in that, we've also had now a technology loan requirement, which is on capital, that we've been mandated, and we have the classroom size. Lots of these expenditures also have come through different needs to deal for that capacity, because we don't get to settle when we build a new school. The state tells us that. And at this point, I think we're, we would have to seriously look at bonding. And that bonding was going to have to come out of some source that isn't impact fees. So at some point, what we're going to have to look at, this board, whether it is us or someone else, is when that time comes, is we are probably looking at having to bond a school. We have not had to do that. That would be an unusual situation now for this board to be in.
I did meet with Mr. Blocker in reference to the seven-year timeframe to expend the funds, and we have not been at risk of not spending those funds, which I felt more comfortable with, because I was thinking in my mind, you know, how are we looking down the road? Mr. Dixon says there's nothing in the five-year plan, we're collecting impact fees now, we have seven years to show that impact and to spend that money on the impact. But he assured me that that is something that the county commission, or the county administration alerts the school as far as annually, when those funds are coming up to expire.
They will typically send us a spreadsheet outlining what's in our accounts in the speak for impact fees, and tell us what year they were collected, so you can see when they're actually due to be spent. And the last report we got, we were not in jeopardy of losing any funding. I think they're out maybe three years to date. So we certainly are in good shape now. I can't tell you what it's going to be in five years, but I think I do echo your, your sentiment about, even in periods of low growth, or no growth, or negative growth, you still have to plan for the future by collecting today's impact fees to be able to build that school to be ahead of the curve. Instead of, because typically what happens in a lot of fast-growing counties is, they can't keep up. They cannot keep up with the growth with the schools, and they become a horrible city. And that's what happens.
I definitely understand that. Looking at where we, courtesy of resources here, permits for apartments are up, industrial construction's up, retail is up. The one area that's, that's still down is the single-family home. I talked with some people regarding that, and looking at the comparable between the 55-plus communities that don't have to pay the school impact fee, which means their impact dollars are less, they're still not seeing any movement within their, within their arena. So looking at, if we had the power to reduce the impact fee, will that stimulate any, any kind of single-family construction?
I think research shows that there is no correlation.
There's no correlation.
We have seen an uptick in building permits for single-family homes. We've been seeing them kind of almost double.
Last quarter of last year.
Comparing it to last year, it's still down. And looking at other avenues, when you've got a place like Black Diamond, they charge builders that are out, coming into their area out from the outside, they charge an impact fee outside of the counties. So looking at all these variables out there, I definitely support the fact that we need to have our costs offset and let those people that are coming in with the burden, that are impacting our community, bear that load of responsibility instead of putting it back into a form of a bond, or increase out-of-the-room taxes, or however we would need to move forward in order to offset costs. With all that said, I definitely appreciate the research that's been done. I support the impact fee. We need to have a conversation with the Don Rowan commissioners sometime to talk about how that impact fee is, is determined, the timing of it. And when, when a retail facility sees that they have an area that's not moving, they have a sale go on that area. Well, when you've got an industry up, apartments up, you don't need a sale there. The sale would be eliminate impact fees. Maybe there needs to be a focus in another area, but that's outside of our realm. So anyway.
And that's, you know, one of, and I think Ms. Balfour, you bring a point, because one of the things that we have, for part, always argued is, our responsibility is not to help marketing of homes, except to have the best educational system for the least amount of dollar. And I think that we know that we do that, because statutorily, we are at the bottom of what is available for payment. We have no additional millage rate. And if you don't know, Marion County passed a solid extra mill in capital that they now collect. We get 1.5, they now get 2.5. They also have, you know, areas like the villages that have their own private impact fee, which has, which has funded a private charter school to be done there. One of the challenges that we know that we have, and Mr. Dixon has shared this with us in the past, that just Central Ridge, which, as you know, is one of the most popular general areas between Citrus Hills, Beverly Hills, Citrus Springs, Pine Ridge, that one of the challenges we've had there is that the homes that are already existing, as they continue to get sold, those vacant homes, the need for the school takes place and comes into our five-year plan regardless of any new permits come in. So every time we get a new permit in, we just get even farther down the road with less money. And that's been the general concern that we've tried to articulate. And that is the point, and I think this board knows this, but it says in their statute that annually, I'm sorry, that, that on a, every three-year basis, they will sit down with the school superintendent to review what the needs are if we need to increase the impact fees. The idea was, was to have a better understanding. We do that through the study. And so we, we monitor that through the study, but if there's a constant change to that study, that's where we get vulnerable. In the past, it's been a percentage change. In this case, it's 100%. And, yeah, I've been waiting. It, it appears that it's going to pass, but it has not yet 3-2. From what we can tell, it looks like Commissioner Kitchen and Commissioner Demato are descending, but that has not been made official yet. And it appears that from what we're getting, and this is all very unofficial, that it is, looks like it's going to be a two-year, but there seems to be some caveat of conversation. And I don't know, but my hope was, Commissioner Carnegie was hoping to help find a way to bring us all back to the table. Their new county administrator, I think people know, has said that he's a proponent of, of a multitude of funding vehicles for communities, impact fees being one. I don't necessarily think he is pro or con, but certainly has recognized the value in them. I think this is what our board needs. We need to ourselves have a workshop on the impact fees. I agree. I think it wouldn't hurt for us on an annual basis prior to this point of us making sure that we are informed and we get the public informed on impact fees and projects. I think we could make it even part of the state of the district. But we definitely have come to a time where we all think we all, everyone knows what we know and how we fund. And we have a new board that, that definitely is going to have new challenges. We're going to have to find some ways of funding things. And, and the challenge is that there is a perception of people that say, why are you going to come to us with a referendum for an additional millage rate if they're not being collected for impact fees, and we're going to have to pay that? And I think that is an argument we're going to have to face at some point, because we may find ourselves having to ask our referendum, because we don't have an option to, to adjust the millage rate.
And we've worked very hard, I should say, Kennedy's worked very hard to make sure we're business down, that we don't borrow lots of money, like some counties, and they go down the hole because they borrow the money. We've worked to do that, and now we're in a position of someone saying, I know you've worked very hard, but, you know, I don't think so. We're not going to do the impact fees. Y'all struggle on the best way you can, if you go into debt, so what? And we don't want to hear that. We want to be responsible people, like we've always been. And Doug is saying, let's sit down, let's sit down and go over all of this, get all the answers we possibly can, and formulate some ideas. No one's listening to us.
And what we do know is that in three years, we're going to be sitting here talking about the same thing, probably.
Absolutely, because it's been that, I think one of the problems though that we have is, the, the dip thing that was a little different this time is, we have known clearly that we have supported impact fees. I don't think that right now the community knows, does this board support as a portion of our revenue generating, impact fees?
Yes.
That's one.
So are you calling it?
I'm asking, I'm asking this board, whether you are going to, because at this point, we are under the impression that we don't, we have been told, you do not have supportive impact fees, a majority of your board does not have support impact fees.
That's totally wrong.
And then, in my opinion, I think that's wrong, but that is the perception out there. It was in the paper. It was in the paper.
It was in the paper.
So the question is, is, and I'm saying, I have made it clear that I am a strong supporter of that. If, if we are, as a board, are saying that that has not changed, then I think we should be willing to say that. Because if we're not, then the perception is that, that we need to start looking elsewhere. And I think we have to instruct staff to start completely removing that from the obstacle. Because right now, we still are saying that when we come down the road, impact fees, we hope to have a, to be a part of that plan. If we, in a year from now, the commissioners are saying they're going to need to know, where do we stand on impact fees? If we have now started saying, well, I don't know, then I think we have a problem. Because I don't think that we can then go to the community.
Well, I don't think, for one thing, I don't think the perception that any one of us has that type of persona, well, I don't know. Not one of us has that type of a persona when it comes to any issues, specifically an issue this, this serious. So with that said, I have been a proponent for the school system since the day I moved into this district. And when it comes to funding and supporting this school system through impact fees, I've personally paid them many times as I've gone through my own building projects. So again.
As a board member though, now you have to ask, are you willing to use, and do you support, impact fees so that we can make sure we have a single voice?
So Mr. Kennedy, would you like each of us?
So you're trying to call us?
I, I think, I think we need to.
Because you're right, the perception out there is that some do some help. We need to know.
I think so. And I, I am saying I am willing to say that I support that.
Well, I'm willing to.
And I'm saying, I support the impact fees.
I'm willing to say I support the impact fees, but I want to move forward with a workshop and communication between us to not be in this position three years.
I agree, completely.
With the county, we need to have an open-door policy of discussion, so we need to invite them to our house.
I agree.
How are you surprised?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I agree with the need for impact fees, to fund, to fund infrastructure for the schools. I mean, I think that's.
Yeah, and I think that we all said that. I'm sorry.
There's a misperception.
But there's a misperception, and I wanted for us to be able to say, that doesn't mean we all don't have an asterisk, by the way, after it. And I'm sorry, Mr. Dodd, I interrupted.
And, you know, I recognize too that it's not on our statutory authority to set the impact fees.
Nope.
The county commission has that authority, we don't. I, I do wish there'd be better communication, and our board reached out to them, and that was. And our board reached out to them, and that was not accepted, or that was, we weren't allowed to have that conversation. I think that's very important for us to have good communication. I want us to have a good relationship with the county. I mean, the schools are a big reason why people like to come to Citrus County. And a low crime rate, big schools is a big part of what brings people here. So, we need to have a good rapport with our county commission. Mr. Kennedy, I think you're right on. I mean, it is the largest employer in the county, the school district. You know, but when you read in the paper, you can't always, we all know that, you know, when things come out different. I mean, even it said today that the school district.
Exactly.
Has conceded. You know, and I don't think the superintendent has conceded the impact battle. I mean, I think we all see the.
He's not ever white flag.
So, you know, with that.
We do have this box of tissues, but it's not a white flag, okay? I'm laying down, it's fine.
So, with five of them.
And I think that, and I value this board for being willing to say that, because again, I don't think we're not talking about with an asterisk. We all, I think, are willing to, in the moment, say, well, okay, but what are we talking about? Mr. Carnehan, I think, made a, you know, he's well concerned about, I think, he is concerned from our perspective about new homes. He's concerned about trying to bring new businesses. And there sometimes is, okay, how do we do that together? And Mr. Dodd, I think what we, if you're agreeable and the rest of the board, and I think that you kind, I'm saying that to you because I think you actually have stated it along with Ms. Balfour. I think once this dust settles, maybe we can, in a couple of months, can send a formal letter to the Board of County Commission to say, let's have a joint meeting. We can just pick a couple of topics. It doesn't have to be just impact fees. Just say, let's just sit down and talk. We've done that in the past. I think you may have been chair during that time.
I was, and successfully, we worked together.
And when I was chair, we met.
It would be a good thing.
When I was chair, we met with them.
So, I think we can do that. And I think usually, they, just a positive conversation that comes out of it. So, I appreciate this board doing that because I don't, I didn't feel that we were as ambivalent, I'm sorry, help me out. Thank you. As I think that sometimes it was reported that we were, I think that we've all expressed at different times, in different ways, the value of impact fees, and that doesn't mean we have it.
I think the thing to keep in mind is we don't communicate. So, when something comes out in the paper and a message is sent that may or may not be a total reflection of the feelings of any one board member, you've got to keep it in mind that the conversation cannot take place until we're here.
Absolutely.
So, there is a, the assumption that whatever is in black and white in the paper, that can't, we can't assume that that's accurate, totally accurate. With that said, thank you for being here to report.
And something, Mr. Dodd.
We appreciate you being here.
I had nothing to do with it.
No, and it's good for, I think if nothing else, I think the public has become re-informed about impact fees more than they had been in previous years, and I think that's a positive thing. Mr. Dodd, one of the things that does, it is frustrating that we don't have that statutorial, you know, we're, we are the only, again, line item on that impact fee that can't control, they don't control our budget, but they can control whether we collect that money. And it's kind of like that this board was in a little bit of a situation a number of years ago when, and there's no one up there, that person's no longer on the board, but that they said, well, they weren't going to put an item on the ballot for a referendum that the school board had voted for. And that was stopped. And so, it's, while it's not exactly the same, the difference is, I think we do have an issue talking with other board members around the state that this impact fee issue of school boards needing it funded and it affecting their budgets and Board of County Commissions having the policy authority is problematic. Hernando County, if you don't know, one of the things that happened down there is three of their board members ended up getting replaced. Or I should say, two of the majority got replaced. And one of the issues that they dealt with was that the, they could not get a study done on the impact fees for schools. The school board couldn't because the Board of County Commission wouldn't release those study funds out of the impact fee fund. And so, they became, there became a problem of how they even got a study done. And done, and this became a problem that they struggled with. Now, because of concurrency, they have been able to kind of have a stick to force that. So, we still have an issue out there, and concurrency is also one that, at some point, Mr. Redchall will update us on, but that.
I got a big now on that.
If you would.
Yeah, I mean, the Board of County Commissioners voted. We have an interlocal agreement and Board of Statute, gosh, I can't remember. 163.3180 concurrency, and it allowed for, and it was mandatory at one point in time, and then now it's not mandatory. So, the Board of County Commissioners voted to remove concurrency from the interlocal agreement. This is under .3177. You have to have an interlocal agreement to discuss, you know, infrastructure in schools and to kind of coordinate all this, but concurrency is no longer mandated. So, they voted to remove it, and they have sent over a draft interlocal agreement. I met with Mr. Dixon, I'll, and we're making some modifications and tweaking it before we have to, you know, to give it back to them.
Do we still have to have some type of agreement, though, dealing whether we call it concurrency or it's called something else? Do we not still have to have that?
You have to have an interlocal agreement.
Okay.
DCA, right?
Ma'am?
Department of Community Affairs, DCA?
DCA.
In Tallahassee? Don't they mandate that?
No, the statute mandates it.
Okay.
Statute, it's 160, I think it's 163.317.
Well, and interlocal agreement and concurrency, are those synonymous terms? Or does one have more meat than the other?
The interlocal agreement is a formal agreement between, it'll include the county, the school board, and the city of Crystal River and the city of.
But that's what concurrency automatically does.
Yeah, but this, the statute says you have to have an interlocal agreement, and it has to have, there's like 12 factors that must be outlined in it on how you're going to handle certain things.
Okay, so with the interlocal agreement, if a big developer comes in, needs infrastructure, they're going to have to pay upfront for that in concurrency, not in interlocal agreement? Do they have them?
It doesn't have anything to do with the impact fees or what.
No, I know, it's totally, it's different.
It goes to, you know, if you're going to start building out.
This is a workshop.
If you're going to develop, you know, a subdivision, and how that's going to affect schools, and where you're going to put school sites, and the planning, it's more of a planning aspect of it.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
So, that was something, well, at this point, though, one party can break, I believe, the agreement.
The interlocal agreement that contains concurrency states that anybody can terminate the interlocal agreement upon 30 days' notice. And, but the statute says that if you don't have an interlocal agreement, you have to follow the statute anyhow, but you have to have an interlocal agreement. So, if it gets busted up and gets terminated like it did, then you still have to follow those 10 or 12 different things.
Okay.
Right now, but you have to go back and go through the process of redoing your interlocal agreement and getting it back.
So, what's the bottom-line impact to having the concurrency eliminated?
Well, concurrency gave us, gave the school district a lot more control over development and planning. It also allowed, like, if a big developer wanted to come in and build a 500, you know, unit or 1,000-unit place, and it was going to force us to build a new school based on it, you know, they had to contribute towards the, towards the school and help us to build it. So, it really gave us a little bit more control on how, on how the planning and zoning and how those types of things were going to get done.
Okay, so concurrency would ensure that a big development would have, have to basically kind of give the dollars to the school system in advance before you started construction? So, we're.
If there was going to be an impact on the school district that we had control over what, how it was going to be handled, and also could force developers into paying some, paying us monies to, to, for student stations and different things, if we had to, if we needed to.
The concurrency was a guarantee that we would know at that time.
Right.
You know, and if we determined at that time we didn't have the funds to build a new school, then yes, we could have mandated or asked them to either contribute or to build the school. So, we've never done that. It was just, it was our guarantee to be at the table to know that next year, they're bringing in a 500 apartment building.
It also worked for when we were planning for a school. We didn't build a school somewhere where there wasn't development. I mean, so it works both ways. It helps the community, it helps the school district.
And I think one of the issues that, you know, as far as concurrency is concerned in this county, is that there's so much land that is already subdivided and platted, you know, that's already on the books to be able to build single-family residences, you know, you would really, someone would have to come in and probably buy up a lot of agricultural land and move to redevelop something, so, I mean.
And I think the other fear in this county, community, with us being involved concurrency, that we would stop some development. All we ever want to be at the table or know what was going on.
And we've never stopped it using concurrency.
Potentially what the motivation is to eliminate it anyway.
That's the only thing we can figure. There's only been three districts in the state that have ever done it, so, that have ever removed it. So, it never quite made sense from any of our perspective. And, you know, for example.
It was harmful.
Well, I don't think any of us do. That's why we're all a little perplexed by it.
Do you know what person or persons brought this up to eliminate?
It was the builders. I think they're the ones who came to us and pushed for lobbying the commissioners for it.
The builders have been here many times, not wanting concurrency and also not wanting impact fees.
Yep.
Well, that's the truth. Who in the county took that on as a cause? Who you took it on?
I am not sure.
To get it on?
I don't know who made the motion. I can find out for you if you want me to.
Would you?
Yes, ma'am.
And I think this board may know or may have heard that Citrus Hills, we're going to have permits increased next year already. Citrus Hills has been building, that was a big part of the last quarter, who's been building, and they, of course, got several new pods that they're getting ready to build as well.
And sale pending in MLS right now is at 330 something?
Yeah, so there's going to be permits regardless of what the county commission voted today that's going to increase. So, with that.
All those have impact fee credits.
Yes, yeah, that's going to be interesting for them because they, actually, their credits just went to zero.
Did they?
Because there's no, you don't use it. I guess they could bank their credits. Maybe it'll be worth more later. Mr. Redchall, did you have anything else on attorney legal matters?
Yeah, I do. At the last board meeting, I made an announcement to try to have an attorney-client shade session at this meeting. Unfortunately, I said we were going to do it at 3:05, which.
Wouldn't that be?
Which you cannot do because you have to actually start it in the regular meeting and then go into the shade session and then come back out into the regular meeting. So, and it's in regard to the Regis Bank case up in Alabama. So, I'm going to go ahead and re-announce my desire to have that meeting. So, pursuant to, and I want to have it on the 27th, excuse me, in our special meeting. I spoke with Ms. Verdi Romi. I think we're going to start the special meeting at 10:00. In case, I think we're going to have expulsions at 9:00 and then start the special meeting at 10:00. So, start this meeting, this shade session at 10:05. And it'll probably last 20 minutes at the most, maybe 30 minutes, probably. I'm going to have to wait out. But pursuant to Florida statute 286.011 parentheses, eight in parentheses, I would like an attorney-client executive conference to gain advice concerning the pending litigation between the school board of Citrus County, Florida, Regis Bank, Montgomery County, Alabama case CB-2009-900737.00. Subject matter of the meeting shall be confined to negotiations or strategy sessions related to litigation expenditures. Entire session shall be recorded by a certified court reporter. No portion of the meeting will be off the record. The meeting is scheduled for January 27, 2015, at 10:05 a.m. Persons present shall be myself, possibly Mr. Copeland, who's the attorney up in Alabama. I want to discuss some things with him. He might not need to be here for what I need to discuss with you. He's the attorney for the school board in Alabama. The superintendent, Ms. Himmel, board members, Mr. Dodd, Ms. Bryant, Ms. Balfour, Ms. Powers, and Mr. Kennedy. And upon the completion of the lawsuit, the transcript will be made part of the report record. And outside of that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mullen?
Good, thank you.
Mr. Mullen?
So, you want Mr. Flotter?
Yeah, can you get them up?
Of course. We had, we had a request a while back that we've been trying to accommodate, but we're not going to be able to. We just want to make sure we go over with the board so that often times when people don't like our answer, it'll come to you.
No.
So, we want to make sure that you have this information ahead of time. I'm sorry. Can I look at Lee White?
No, no, that is great. On September 25, 2014, actually, Beth Beatty, Artusa for Social Studies, and I met with a gentleman. His name was Joe Polartis, and he actually was representing two entities in our community, the Veterans Foreign Wars Post 8189 and the American Legion Post 155 within Citrus County. And back in 1989, he actually approached the La Canto School Complex, particularly, I believe, the primary school and the middle school, and asked to have students spell out POW MIA on the field and had an aerial flyby and did that. And so, he wanted to basically, years later, met with us and wanted to actually repeat that and have an assembly outside and basically include all the 3,000 students from the La Canto School Complex. And the information that he wanted spelled out on the field is actually given to you in the handout. But the handout, actually, that I gave you comes from the gentleman that I believe represents the post, General. And so, I basically explored the idea, again, asking him for information, some specifics about what it is. And again, a complete assembly, have students out on the football field to basically share this. And I kind of shared about the concern that we had about students coming out of the classroom for that duration of time, the organization of that many students to be able to engage in this activity. And I thought, again, admirable, that's a very, very admirable process. But I would want to really talk with those folks, like the principals, to be able to talk about, you know, the feasibility of managing large groups of students like this and preparing for this, including an assembly that would include speakers and veterans and things like that. So, I did actually communicate with him after I met with the principals and kind of shared, again, the challenge of that. And I basically offered him an opportunity. There was an activity that was going on November around Veterans Day. And again, every time I meet with a group like this, I share with them a lot of the Sandra Day O'Connor Act, a lot of the information of how our curriculum and our changes that are going on in our school, the whole veterans in the classroom is a big, big program that we have. Him talking about encouraging them to be part of that process. There was actually a flag raising over at La Canto Primary School, offered him an opportunity that that might be an avenue, tried to couple that together, and then basically replied that there was a conflict in their schedule that they wouldn't be able to do it at that time. So, basically, this was the next request that I got was to actually, from the post commander. So, Mrs. Himmel wanted to bring this to the group, to share this with you so that way you can consider that.
Are you needing direction from us on this, or?
Well, I can tell you.
I was just going to say, because I'm going to turn this over to Wes.
Well, you have two aspects of this, okay? The first off is that the formation of the students spelling out the words in it has the word God in it. And I wrote a letter back to Ms. Himmel and explained that in my legal opinion, that's going to violate the Establishment Clause because it's an endorsement of a particular religion. And having the students be, have to go out there and dispel that is a violation of the Establishment Clause, so.
Because it would be a mandate?
Yes.
Great. I just want to make sure that the public understands we are not stating we don't believe in God. in God. We're just saying that we can't mandate a student to go out there.
But the school cannot endorse any religion and by, you know, by forcing the students to go out there and do that, it's, it's a violation of the Establishment Clause. So, I, I mean, now, then, if you want to remove the word, you know, then you also, then you have the, for, in my personal opinion, which doesn't count because of y'all's lieu, I mean, it's a very big disruption to have that many students outside, you know, to go out there and form that. It's not a, I don't think that's a 10-minute thing.
Would there be anything that if, because part of this is also the logistics, who's planning it, coordinating and all that? What if they wanted to on their own somehow get the community together and they wanted to have access to our fields?
Kind of facilities use agreement and they can use the football field on whatever day that they would like to if they want to have volunteers from the community and come and do it?
Because it may not be even something limited, I mean, there may be homeschool students. There may be private school students that would like to participate in this. I mean, this isn't just a public school, you know, of you. I mean, I'd have my, my kids go out and stand in this. I think this is great. But it's not necessarily, I think, the school district's taking it on that would concern them.
Well, this facility use agreement, it's all the time. They're like, you know, we have, you know, churches that, you know, use some facilities to hold, to hold church while the churches are being built and things like that. So, under the facilities use agreement, we're not endorsing anything, you know? So, if they would like to, you know, raise the troops and come and do it on a certain day with the facilities use agreement, I don't have any legal objection to that.
Board members?
No, I think it's staff's fault. Whatever staff decides, it's the staff. This is a staff issue. I definitely understand why you brought it up for us because we may get phone calls or whatever, but I do, do support your decision. I just support whatever you feel is...
And that's why we brought it up because we feel like that once our letter goes out, they'll come do a presentation to the board and ask that. So, we just thought, knowing that that'll be the next step, that we could send a letter that, you know, that we, the schools, the board, whatever, can put in our letter, that it's just a logistical...
If it became a community project, that would be, to me, a great thing, a broader bring them together.
And the facility use idea to keep the door open. I think keeping the door open is necessary and the idea is fine. It's just logistics, especially this time of year, it's going to be tough.
Well, I appreciate Mr. Bradshaw's legal opinion, but I don't agree with that. I think we get other legal opinions that would say otherwise. We still say the Pledge of Allegiance, One Nation Under God. I certainly hope we would never, you know, give legal advice to take that out. That's not why we shouldn't do this. It's a logistical issue. I do not feel like what is on this page is offensive and I do not have a problem with what's on this state, on this page, but I think logistics of the issue is the matter that I see. So, I'll go on record now with saying that that is my issue with this. I think this is an administrative issue for the superintendent, but I do appreciate you bringing it to us so we'll know because I'm sure we would, we would have some calls on it. But I think it is, there are other options. I think that Mr. Kennedy's brought up the other options too for them, but that's how I feel.
We have tests to give. Just saying.
And lessons to learn. But you, then I'll draft the letter. Is that all right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Allen, do you have anything else?
Good.
I'm sorry, Mr. Moll? Mr. Dodd?
Yes. A couple items I'd like to bring to the board. I was placed on the Safety Committee and I went to that meeting, Safety and Security Committee, and I was able to get some items on the agenda and I would like to talk a little bit about that. One of the things, the committee, we did discuss the safety issue of Middle School Road and US 41, and the committee recommended unanimously that we, as a board, take that into consideration. And so, with that, I would like to make a motion that the School Board send a letter to the Secretary of the Florida Department of Transportation requesting that the redesign and signalization of Middle School Road and US 41 be expedited due to increasing safety concerns for students, parents, employees, and citizens.
Can we, do we need it even as, I mean, the motion's fine, but I meant, can we just go ahead and do that? We don't need necessarily to advertise for the letter?
Which letter?
Meaning, it didn't need to be on the agenda for us to take action? Can we do this without taking, without it being on the agenda? I'm just looking for a, I just want to make sure procedurally I need to...
Right, procedurally.
Am I okay? Okay. If second, if somebody would second that?
Second.
I have a motion and, and by Mr. Dodd and a second by Ms. Bryant. And Mr. Dodd, would you just state it again because it was a little lengthy and I apologize. I, I didn't have it in front of me.
That the School Board send a letter to the Secretary of the Florida Department of Transportation requesting that the redesign and signalization of Middle School Road and US 41 be expedited due to increasing safety concerns for students, parents, employees, and citizens.
Excellent. And so, I'm sorry, I'm making sure everyone is okay with everything and now I'm moving forward. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Dodd. Go ahead.
I also have one other issue that I would like to have discussion on, and I think this would be one of the items that we would do in closed session, but also discuss the camera issue, security cameras on campuses. And I think that that would be an appropriate discussion for this board to have and the plan for that. And I think that...
Can we make time in a, in a very upcoming workshop or meeting for a shade session on security?
Doug and I talked today and we're all looking at our schedules, see if we can do it.
Let's, let's do that because I think that's so needed and, and I think we'll appreciate Mr. Dodd, your, your input on that as well. But I know that's something we, we need to have.
I attended the SACs meeting at Citrus High School and at Enver's Primary School. Those are two of my schools and those were both good meetings. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Dodd. Ms. Bryant?
Well, as you know, I went to Citrus Springs Elementary School.
Thank you.
That was an awesome, awesome SAE state.
Ms. Bryant was good enough to cover me because I had multiple engagements of SAC meetings on the same night.
He was chasing cats.
So, yeah. So, I did one and she did the other.
And, and he's going to cover for me. Seems how I cannot go to the galaxy of the stars. The second year in a row, I can't believe that.
But you're going to be saving his money at FSBIT?
I'm going to do my best.
Okay. Turn them over and shake those coins out.
Absolutely. That's all I have.
Okay. I just wanted to spotlight what's happening at Chris River Middle School. They have been doing a program they call Homework Dinner Survey. They have a homework opportunity for kids that, at this point, they've had 25 students that are in sixth grade attending from 2:30 to 5:00. And during that time period, they have an opportunity for tutoring, for guidance with homework assignments, and they also, because of United Way funding, they also get a dinner. And it's been a tremendous, it's just been a tremendous opportunity for students to get ahead of the game when it comes to math specifically, focusing on basic math skills. Other things happening out there, a lot of the schools are having school-wide testing. They're placing their students in the, for example, something, somebody shut one.
It was my, it was my fault. I moved something and it, I apologize.
Are you done? I was looking at it. We've got so many of the schools, specifically Chris River Middle School, they're going to go from their typical block and they're going to broaden it to have 120-minute concentrated time where the kids are actually placed in the testing environment. So, we're working really hard across the district to ensure that the students have every opportunity to be successful. I'm just very impressed with our staff and our leadership to make sure that that happens with all the pressure that we have this year. So, thank you to all of you out there that are putting in some serious time. Thank you. And I could go on and on about the good things, but I'm going to pass it to Ms. Powers.
Just mentioning, I enrolled in CPR course for February the 23rd. I also got letters about three other things I was supposed to do on February 20th, but that's what I initially did and inviting all of y'all.
I have my card.
You already done.
I want that, he did.
I got, I have my card. I have to keep it for coaching.
That's right.
But I was just going to say, Doug probably does.
Yeah. And then another thing going on, the volunteer mentor course is going to be taught on January the 16th, 9 to 10 here, and on February the 13th, 11 to 12, so, rest of the year. And right after the volunteer portion, which is happening, after the mentor portion takes over. So, if any of you want to do that and just learn about the program, you may do so. As a board member, you're pretty, pretty well, like, I can go in and do most of anything, you know? But if in the future you want to be a volunteer mentor, then it's open for you to take the course and mention it. And you don't have to pay any money and you are renewed, so, here, okay? The next thing, I wanted to find out if you, your questions, you'd asked, if there was a follow-up on that, if there was something you needed to do, but I think you have already followed up on it yourself, so...
I'm sorry, in reference to...
Your questions, you asked at the last meeting, you asked several different questions that you wanted to explore.
Okay.
I want to make sure that we followed up on all of that, so I think you have...
Right, yeah, I'm following up.
That's good.
Through different committees and organizations or groups and all of this.
We wanted to make sure that we kept that on the table.
Right. I appreciate that. Thank you.
The next one, I know we talked about the FSBA conference and workshop and we're going to share some information at some point, so maybe if you'll take a look at, at the workshop coming up and, oh, okay, it's time to share it if we can. And then we also talked about a workshop on advertising policies and public input policies, so I want to make sure, again, that we didn't take it off the table until we scheduled it. And tomorrow or Thursday, I'm going to be over at IMS observing science class with Alice Rawls and wanted to just do a few of this, make sure, you know, we're all up to date on whatever's happening in the classroom and I wanted to go to see what Alice is doing in science. And I know she's going to be very involved, always very involved with her kids, so that's it.
Thank you. I'm going to hand these out to you all. This is, I'm sorry, yeah, got it. This is the, I'll pass that along in case they need. This is our board annual calendar.
Yes, we're going to do our calendar.
Yeah, this is it. We're, I hadn't put it in a color yet only because I wanted you to have this and then at any of the next meetings or if you need to have discussions before then with Ms. Verderami. But this is updating our, this is not activities just for Mr. Dodd so that you know, these aren't our, our social activities as much as this is our board activities and, and things that we're going to do. You talked about the, the policy items, particularly the ones on the advertising, public input, and also for us to review our School Board self-policy as, as an organization of 2.22. Those are going to be brought forward, I think, in February or they're going to be, we're working them through the system right now to get them back to us. And then what I'd like to do, and we, just for conversation, we don't have to answer it now, I throw it out there, we can talk about it in Jan., at our next workshop, but in February, I'd love to do another one of those sessions where we go upstairs and we do our policy, 2.22, our goal setting, and then we also can review our Florida School Board Association. We can do that more of an roundtable instead of in this kind of formal setting. It's just usually better. So, we may just decide whether we do one and maybe we do that after we've adjourned the rest of this. Doug, what we end up doing is, we have our, our workshop portion for us up there, it's noticed just like it is, but instead of us sitting like this, we sit around the table and it just tends to be a more casual conversation that we can talk to each other, as we know.
That policy review on the 2.22 dealing with how we run as a board?
Yeah, it's how we run as a board and how we would get things on the agenda and those, that's what, and that would be, I think, a better way for us to have that conversation with each other than, than like this. We still have to bring it up. That's just the, the workshop part. It would still then come before for public input as we go through the policy of it. But it allows us to have those goal-setting sessions because that'll be a good time for us to talk about what things we want to set as a goal for us and then kind of review some of the things we learned at Florida School Board and share out. We, what I'm thinking though is that we may have the traditional workshop part of that down here, start the day that way, and then maybe either after lunch or after we've completed that, we go up there where it's, so that we can dismiss staff and we don't have to have staff waiting around for us because that's our conversation, not, not for them.
I think one thing, two things, if it works for you. The second I want to do about things we brought up in the last board meeting and asked about, maybe that could be like a role of the vice chair to, to be sure that those things are...
I would love that.
And you always, you know, write it down.
I would love that.
Okay. So, maybe I'll take on that if it's...
That would be great. That would be great. That's that. Is there, is everyone okay with that? I just want to make sure that we're all okay for doing that. Look at the, the items coming up. This is also, and Doug, I'm saying this partly just for your, this is also a time where we will, we'll need to include in there, where we can find time for the shade session, for example. And then this is where we would also add, if there's something that you find you want to workshop, you want us to talk about, these are where, and not just you, all of us, we can sit there and say, this is what we want to get more information on, we add it to this and then we start bringing it forward in it. Sometimes it's even like, you know, well, let's talk about that closer to budget time or let's talk about that at a different time.
And maybe you could for a session, you could add what we want to do in the legislative phase, what agenda we want to follow, what information we want to get out of it.
Absolutely.
Because sometimes you forget what you, what you want to do.
And it will be right upon us.
Right.
So, February would be perfect.
Do we have to advertise for a shade session or a session like what Wes was talking about? No? Okay.
I think it's just, it's maybe in our minutes as to what this, what it's for.
I was going to make sure I got that.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, because I would like that...
The executive session for marketing, you just call it.
It looks like January is pretty busy for the workshop, but I would, if we could talk about those security issues in February, I'd, I'd like not to push it out too much further.
I agree. I agree.
I think the reason has to be in the shade sessions because you don't want to tell everyone where the security is.
Right, oh, yes, I understand.
That's the reason.
I understand.
They're used to having all that information, you don't set it out.
I'm thinking even if we, maybe on, on the security issue, if we, we could do it, maybe we, and we could look at it in, at our January workshop, but talk about February, we come in a little early or something, depending on how many expulsions we have, and just do a shade session then.
You've had the School Resource Officers Program. Maybe we can piggyback right off of that just with open discussion.
Not for the shit, not for the security session because we need to go into a shade. We have to dismiss everyone.
So, we can dismiss everybody like we did here when we have a...
You can, but it's usually for the public's portion. We've tried to, to not inconvenience the public on it and try to meet at times that didn't inconvenience them. Yes, sir.
May I ask a question? Because I know we're being limited on who's in those shade sessions, but for the purpose of this meeting, would we have the Safety and Security Committee here or what members of that committee would you want? Okay.
Yeah. I can tell you that I think the, to me, it's, it would involve, I would think, the administrative team, I mean, the executive team and the board members at the very least because I think all of you and then the attorney of them as well.
That's right.
But, but Mr....
There's usually a group in the sheriff's department that's with them.
And that would be great.
We have in the past, but we'll figure that out.
If we can have them there, I think that would be, you know, excellent.
Some of our decisions have been based on their recommendations.
Right.
Also, Mr. Kennedy, in reference to the strategic plan, and I, you know, was involved with a little of that at the sheriff's office, I know we have goal-setting here, but I know there is a strategic plan. What is the timeline on that and do we need to revisit that at some point or is that administrative?
Strategic plan, I think that you may, we have, we have not had a, a true strategic plan. That would be, again, something we can talk about in the goal-setting that we have and if that, you know, that's been something in the past, they have had periods of times And if that, you know, that's been something in the past, they have had periods of times where they had a strategic plan, that they did. Now, if you're talking about the district's strategic plan.
Yes, I'm talking about district strategic plan.
The district one is developed by the district, and that timeline actually begins with the SAC committees having their, they actually develop their school improvement plans. And from that, the district's improvement plans come forth. I guess they don't call them improvement plans anymore, do they? They call them, I guess, they call.
Improvement, that's what we.
It is what it is, though, right? Okay.
Cool.
It is, but the reason I say that, I'm sorry, is that's different than, I'm thinking of a board strategic. The board strategic one is for the board, for ourselves and the district. That's actually something that comes out of the state's requirement and then that information of what the schools are. And it's the schools' plans kind of combined into the districts.
Like, I think about the work that they're going to look at for Home Assassin now with the Environmental Center. I mean, was that on the strategic plan? I mean, I assume that was probably somewhere in the planning process that we look at that.
No, you know, and I actually meant to mention, Doug, because that's, the great question is, where is that even coming from? Because that's maybe part of, I don't know that that really ever got answered. A lot of that's come from, it's one of the only schools that has had a geographical, a geographical area that has declined in its enrollment. And in part, it's because of its location. There isn't really a lot of growth in that area because there's not a development that draws to that. So the question, we had what's called the MGT study that we had, which is what developed us building, you know, building the renovations to Crystal River High, at Crystal River Primary. We generally use that, and if someone hasn't gotten him a copy somewhere, if we could maybe get Mr. Dodd a copy and probably send it to all of us. It's been kind of our guideline of how we were strategically working through the changes. And that includes all of these ones that we funded, including the sewer plant, because the question is, well, we've got to make space in order to renovate eventually IPS. And this study actually tells us what, how our facilities are, how each of them are related, are rated. And it's in depth, it's beyond just the building being in good shape. It's, is it meeting the academic needs, so forth. The issue that they have even brought up to us is, when you have a school that has a declining enrollment and is unique like that, you've got to find a way then to get kids going to that school. And so that becomes thinking out of the box, magnet schools being a question of that. So that's where we've kind of said, we know that our cost there tends to sometimes be out of line with another school because it's designed for about 400 and something students. We have 200 and something, and it's a good school. It's a good school. So how can we attract that? And so we've tried to say, how can we have conversations? I think that's a great, though, point to say, it's going to be time for us to have, I think, a strategic plan as a board, and that would be, I think, one of those pieces of that strategic plan.
You know, I think it all falls right in line with our impact fee argument, right? I mean, we're planning for the future, so, you know, that plan, it would be good to see that, yeah.
And Central Ridge, I mean, that's where, again, that Pine Ridge, okay, where does that fit into our plan on it? I think that, again, that would, on our goal setting, I think we need to do that. A lot of times, we need to put that to say, we need to then have that. The strategic plan is a process in and of itself. It's not uncommon for them to even have a consultant that invents, that works with us on a strategic plan. So it's a, it could be an actual ordeal because the question is, it's not their strategic plan, it's our strategic plan. And so who helps guide us through that process? Florida School Board Association often has been involved in the developing of that. And some of the training you'll have, they'll talk about, you know, that process a little bit. I don't know if that helps, if I said some of those pieces. And for the public, I know that's sitting around, we don't, we can't talk any other way than this way. So it's hard for people to understand, we just sometimes have to be able to do this. Anything else? If we're done, then we are adjourned.